Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. I call this meeting to order. I want to ask everyone to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we enter into tonight's moment of silence, I just want to let everybody know that there's some folks in our extended Kill Devil Hills family are not in the best of health. And now is a good time to say a prayer for those people, so please join me in a moment of silence. Alright. Alright, well, we have an agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented, Mayor?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All of those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have an agenda. Alright, now is the time we set aside for public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the board on any topic of their choosing. We do ask, when you're called upon to approach the podium, speak into the microphone and identify yourself by name and address. There will be no debates. Please keep the comments to three minutes if you're speaking for an individual, and five if you're speaking on behalf of a group. If you have any written remarks, please give them to the clerk when you are finished and they can be added to the public record. That being said, would anybody like to take advantage? Yes, sir?
My name is Bruce White. People know me as Woody, live at Faraway, Lob Riley Court. I've had several building permits over the last five years since I built my home. And two weeks ago, on the sixth, the last inspection was done by Marty Shaw with the Building Inspector's Office. And we had a conversation out front. It was just nothing wrong with my inspection at all. We sat out front and talked for a minute about our children. He knows my son and I know his daughter. So I had a few questions for him because I've done some projects in the past where I was caught out on window size and a few different things, which I understand we were going to do everything by code and I want to do everything by code. In our conversation, we look over and he sees that my neighbor had put in new windows. They were unfinished. They hadn't been wrapped around. They had made them smaller, so I asked him about the two windows that I had to take out of a project I was doing because they were three inches too short for the fire windows. And he explained to me that, you know, as long as you don't change the size of the style windows, but he said, I might want to look at them in case there are bedrooms. How many bedrooms are in there? And I said, I believe there are three downstairs. I'm not sure. That conversation ended. The only thing I said, I said, I wish they would clean up the yard. I wasn't filing a complaint. He wasn't there because I was filing a complaint. The neighbor on my other side, he knew that they had had a ground wire that burned out about four or five months ago because he's been to my house so many different times over a period of different inspections for different projects. And I said, this is at five oh six, I said, well, Ms. West had her electrical issues taken care of. And she's a good friend of mine. She's eighty-five years old. And he said, I wonder if she got a permit? I said, it was repairs. It wasn't an addition or anything like that. He shook his head like that. I said, Marty, I said, I do not want to get anybody in trouble. I am not filing a complaint. You know, that is not why I told you that. About a week went by and Ms. West calls me and she has a letter from Jordan, who I guess is the ordinance enforcer, saying that there was a complaint against her property. And she called another friend and, you know, I was like, I didn't file, I didn't put in a complaint, you know? It was nothing about a complaint against her with our conversation. Well, she finally calls and talks to Marty last Monday. I'm not sure the date last Monday, but he told her, brought up my name, said that I had filed a complaint on both her and the neighbor, which was false. It wasn't a legal statement or ethical, anything else. It's the most unethical thing I've ever known anybody in the town to do. And so she asked me about it. I said, Ms. West, I told her what I'm telling you. That's not what happened. A few days later, Marty sent her his email to Jordan with my name in it, listing a bunch of stuff as a complaint. He sent this lady his email to Jordan with my name in it, not only about her property, what we discussed about what her repairs, but the property next door to her, to an eighty-five-year-old lady. They went out and they condemned her house. Because she, thirty years ago, when this house was built, the downstairs had been upgraded. I know the plumbing and electric work had been done because it had, I have a relative who's a plumber and I know that when you put your waste and overflow on the concrete, that's inspected, then the concrete's, all this was done. We couldn't find a permit for it. I discussed with her about selling her house at one time, so I looked into it. I said, the survey shows it's enclosed. It doesn't say anything about the downstairs, but I knew that upstairs had been permitted for three bedrooms. So now he's really digging into it. Today, I noticed there was a surveyor out there surveying, and I know it had been because of him. I don't see why, even if there was an issue with the building department, why they would go back on a house that's thirty years old, it's the nicest looking house in the neighborhood, and ask this eighty-five-year-old woman to spend all this money? Not only was it unethical for him to use my name in this, it's just, it's a shame. And I know that this time of the year, a lot of them, they ride around and they look for things. I've seen them take pictures. I don't know if it's to generate revenue, but it happens. I mean, you can go through the two thousand block of Avalon section. Every other house there has unconforming issues. But you're not going to go over there and make everybody tear out everything in the downstairs over something that was done thirty years ago and maybe five owners later. And that's what they're doing. It is a shame. This lady's eighty-five years old. She lost her son. She inherited this house from her son the way it sits now and the way it was thirty years ago. Okay, and I'm sorry. That's all I have to say to you. I am going to go further with this and I have talked to an attorney over what's done. If you look at, I'll wrap it up real quick. Under your ordinance, I just looked it up on putting in a complaint. It says straight out anonymous, even if I did put in, it's supposed to be anonymous. And they told me that's only if it's over the phone. It's not right. It's not right. I'm really disappointed. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Mr. White. Would anybody else like to speak in public comment tonight?
My name is Dennis Poehl. I'm a homeowner in Red Chores. Westford, yeah. I promised Michael I'd stay in there three minutes for both sessions. Okay, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, everybody. The nineteen eighty-nine Beach Access Plan has been addressed. The two thousand and nineteen plan has also been addressed by me. Let me check that off. We have talked about the inexpensive improvement of temporary porta-potties at the Fourth and Fifth Street Beach Accesses. Check that off. We have talked about what I believe is the inexpensive seasonal improvements of showers at the Fourth and Fifth Street Beach Accesses. We've talked about the replacement of the Fourth Street Beach Access Handicap Walkway. The people in this room, Mayor, Commissioners, professional employees of Kill Devil Hills, you people can make it happen. You can, you have the ability to make improvements for seasonal porta-potties, showers, and possibly the replacement of the Fourth Street Walkway for the two thousand and twenty-four summer season. I ask you folks to do the right thing. For all to experience KDH, that's a new word, right? With positive beach amenities at Fourth and Fifth Street Beach Accesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poehl. Anybody else like to speak in public comment? Alright, not seeing anybody. Response to public comment, Mr. White, who's left. And that was a lot, so I really don't know where to begin. I think attorneys were mentioned. We may need to wait and let our town attorney have a chance to digest that and give us some guidance.
He's aware of it, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, thank you very much. And Mr. Poehl, I thank you again for coming and addressing us tonight and keeping us well aware of your concerns. Anybody else, any response to public comment this evening? Alright, hearing none, let's move forward with some really exciting news. Introductions and presentations, item number one, Trash Attack Two Thousand and Twenty Four. Sandy, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I am here to make the announcement that we have set the date for Trash Attack Two Thousand and Twenty Four. It will be Saturday, March twenty-third, from nine until noon, and we will stage at Aviation Park. The rain date is that Sunday, March twenty-fourth, from one to three. We are also doing our poster contest again. And that information will go out tomorrow, inviting all kids from K through twelve in the First Flight System or as residents of KDH to submit their trash attack artwork. It's always a great time. Dare County Arts Council Executive Director Jessica Sands will again be judging with members of the committee. We have a meeting scheduled for Tuesday, February sixth, here in this room, at four P M. for planning the event, and we would love to see everyone there. We look forward to continued improvement in this event. Covid, the Covid years kind of left us reeling and set us back, but last year, we doubled what we did in two thousand and twenty-two, and we can hope to do that again this year. So thank you so much for the honor and privilege of heading up Trash Attack. I enjoy it, and I look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
Sandy, what time is that meeting on February sixth?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock.
And it won't last more than forty minutes.
It's a pretty polished operation.
We try. We try. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sandy.
Alright, moving on to introductions and presentations, item number two, Presentation of Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Mr. Mayor, we have on the phone for any questions that the board has, Ms. Emily Mills, CPA of Potter &amp; Company. Emily, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Okay, good. And with that, I will turn to our manager.
So we'll start with the video from Emily.
Good evening. My name is Emily Mills and I'm a partner with Potter &amp; Company. I am pleased to appear before you this evening to present the town's annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year end of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. First, let me thank you for allowing our firm to perform this service for the town. Second, I want to commend the work of the Finance Office. Angel, Sam, and the entire staff were helpful, professional, and wonderful to work with. Each member of the Finance Department should be highly commended for their efforts. On page one of your financial statements, you will find our independent auditor's report. We have issued an unmodified opinion on the statements of the town of Kill Devil Hills as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. An unmodified report is the highest level of assurance that we, as independent auditors, can issue and states that the financial statements present fairly, in all material respects, the financial position of the town at June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is commonly referred to as a clean opinion. In addition to the independent auditor's report, we have also issued a group of reports on the town's compliance. These reports are found in the compliance section of the financial statements, starting on page one sixty-five. These reports deal with the town's compliance with governmental auditing standards, in addition with its compliance of its federal and state programs with various federal and state laws and regulations. We noted no findings that we consider to be significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. The financial statements were submitted to the LGC on November seventeenth, and the LGC reviewed these statements on December fifth. There is one item that requires the town to submit a response to the LGC. This item is concerning a benchmark ratio generated from the LGC's data input workbook. The town's response should be submitted to the LGC within sixty days of today's presentation, and it should be signed by a majority of the board, the manager, and the finance officer. Example responses are available on the LGC's website. The balance sheet information for the general fund can be found on page twenty-four. At the end of year, June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, the town's general fund had an unrestricted cash balance of twenty-one million and restricted cash balance of six million. The general fund's fund balance was thirty million. Of this amount, eighteen million was unassigned for any specific purpose. Revenues and expenditures for the general fund are summarized on page twenty-six. The general fund reported twenty-four million in revenues, twenty-seven million in expenditures, and four point five million from other financing sources. This resulted in an increase to fund balance of one point five million. The statements for the water and wastewater activities begin on page thirty. These funds resulted in a combined increase of one point five million for the year. Again, we would like to thank the town for the opportunity to be of service.
Is there any questions for Emily?
I do not.
I don't have any.
Hey, Emily, thank you very much.
Great work, Finance Department, and, you know, it's always, every single year, we get these great reports. It's a real point of pride for us, so thank you very much.
And in the response to the LGC issue that she referenced, we will have that for you at the next meeting for your review and signature.
Great.
Thank you.
Alright, any ongoing business?
Actually, we have just a little bit more.
Oh, my bad. I'm going too quick. Go right ahead.
We're going to talk about a little bit more of our highlights, and I wanted to touch on first that performance indicator that she mentioned. This is concerning the water and wastewater condition of assets ratio. This is a new requirement by the state, and it's a calculation we have to do that estimates the remaining useful life of all of our water and wastewater assets. So the state has set a benchmark at point five or higher, which would indicate that half of the useful life remains on the water and wastewater system assets. And ours calculated to be point four nine, so right under point five. But the state set this benchmark at point five because a useful life less than point five would potentially indicate that these assets would have to be replaced in the near future. So if you're below a point five, the state wants a response just to make sure that you are keeping up with these assets and making sure that they're not all going to need to be replaced at one time. So the calculation does not take into account the physical condition of these assets. It is strictly a number that's calculated based on what that estimated useful life was when those assets were acquired. So we have an engineer that comes in every ten years, evaluates the water and wastewater systems, and develops a ten-year capital improvement plan. And this was completed in January of two thousand and twenty-two. And the engineer concluded that our water and wastewater systems were in great working condition, great financial condition, no imminently critical infrastructure projects over the ten-year period. So we have a ten-year capital improvement plan to make sure that doesn't happen. But we do have to develop that response, so we're working on that response. And like Debbie said, we'll have that for you at the next meeting for signature. Yes. And then next, I will present our certificate of achievement for the two thousand and twenty-two Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. So this is number thirty-five for the town, which is always really exciting to get, and it's really a testament to the work of the entire Finance Department. It takes the whole department to put together a document like this. But I want to specifically thank Beverly Kissinger and Scott Nickens because they really worked to put this together. And we have submitted the two thousand and twenty-three Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, and so hopefully we'll have number thirty-six for you next year. And then next, this year, the Finance Department put together a popular annual financial report. So this is a supplement to our annual comprehensive financial report. But it is a much more user-friendly, easy-to-read document that gives us the flexibility to highlight what we think is, what you guys want to know, what our citizens want to know, and really anyone who's interested in what's going on in the town. So I would encourage you to look at that document. It's got a lot of good info in it, but I'm going to hit the financial highlights tonight. We will start with the general fund revenues. So you can see those revenues went from about twenty-five point two million in two thousand and twenty-two to about twenty-four point one million in two thousand and twenty-three. I'll touch on the ad valorem and the other taxes on the next couple of slides. So here, I just want to highlight those intergovernmental revenues. Those are grants and just other intergovernmental funds that we get. And that decrease is from a decrease in the FEMA revenues from the beach nourishment project. So we recognize two point eight million in two thousand and twenty-two and only about seven hundred thousand in two thousand and twenty-three. And then those other revenues increased from about a hundred and forty-two thousand to one point two million. That is due to rising interest rates and the increase in investment earnings. So ad valorem taxes, those have been a steady revenue source for us as we had not increased our tax rate since two thousand and twenty. We did see about a one point seven percent increase in tax revenue in two thousand and twenty-three, and that was a result of just improvements in new construction throughout town. And you can see on the chart that we do expect a little bump in two thousand and twenty-four, and that's from the tax increase that was implemented. So here are other taxes and licenses. We saw unprecedented growth in twenty-one and twenty-two in all three of these, sales tax, occupancy tax, and our land transfer. We really saw leveling off or even a decrease in some of these in two thousand and twenty-three. Sales tax, we saw an increase of about three and a half percent. Occupancy tax was a decrease of about three point one percent. When you net those together, it was a decrease of one thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars, so pretty stable revenue sources there. The biggest decrease was in that land transfer tax, so we saw about a forty percent decrease from one point eight million to just a little over a million. And that was expected as interest rates are rising, housing market has really cooled off. So it's still a strong revenue, just not quite as strong as it was in twenty-one and twenty-two. Those intergovernmental revenues I touched on, grants, we thought those were important to highlight. We received the annual PAL bill allocation, and that is a state allocation that goes towards the town-maintained streets. So we received about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-three. The Visitors Bureau, we got two grants. We got the annual allocation for half of the cost of our fireworks display for about twelve thousand dollars. And then we got a one-time two hundred thousand dollar grant that was put towards the cost of, some of the cost of improvements to Meekins Field. From FEMA, I talked about the beach nourishment revenues, but we also got about two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for new radios for our fire department. And then lastly, here, we have the Streamflow Rehab Assistance Program Grant. That was about two hundred and fifty-eight thousand that we received for the rehabilitation of the drainage canal from West Landing to West First Street. So here, we'll move into our expenses. You can see there was quite a bump here from about twenty-one point eight million to twenty-seven point two in two thousand and twenty-three. A huge part of that was the one-time repayment of our FEMA special obligation bond that was for the beach nourishment project as well. So if you take that out of the equation, it was about an eight point one percent increase. And you can see here how those expenses are separated out by primary function of our general government. Each one did have an increase from twenty-two to twenty-three. And those were, you know, we had our seven and a half percent COLA, we had increases to health insurance premiums, and really just an overall increase in operations because of inflation. So we thought it was important to highlight some of the capital projects that are going on around town. Of course, you guys have seen Meekins Field. We had the new playground equipment, parking lot, tennis courts resurfaced, bathroom facility, landscaping upgrades, and of course, the splash pad that was put over there. Aviation Park, the parking lot was expanded and a new roof put on the pavilion. Our streets and sidewalks, street projects that were completed were West Third Street and then the Western, North Corotan, and West Fifth Street project. Seminole and Indian Street was engineered and bid for completion in the current year. And then the sidewalk was added along one fifty-eight in front of the monument. And then Town Hall improvements, you can see that bright blue roof that was added, and then a new roof also on the Records Storage Building. And that brings us to our fund balance. So total fund balance was thirty million, six hundred fifteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-four. That is broken out, about point eight percent of that in non-spendable forms. That's inventory and prepaid's. Thirty-five point three percent is restricted, and that's for state statute, public safety, streets, and capital reserves, which I'll also touch on on the next slide. About two point eight percent was assigned, and that was for subsequent year expenditures, so money that was encumbered from last year and carried over to two thousand and twenty-four. And that left about sixty-one point one percent in the unassigned category, so that was eighteen point seven million. Our fund balance policy requires eight point seven million, leaving about ten million to meet the ongoing needs of the town. So again, those capital reserves, this is money that's set aside for specific capital projects. So we had about three point seven million in beach nourishment, about two hundred and twelve thousand in the shoreline accesses, seventy-three thousand in the rec facilities, forty-nine thousand in sidewalks and multi-use paths, and seven hundred and thirty-two thousand for streets. So that's it for the general fund. We do, just briefly, I'll touch on the two other governmental funds that we have. Our ARP Special Revenue Fund, we received the second installment of the American Rescue Plan funding for a total of about two point three million. And that money was transferred into the general fund this year, so the balance of that fund at June thirtieth was down to zero. And then the beach nourishment project, we've talked about that a little bit, so I'll just highlight. Total expenses as of June thirtieth were six point three million, and that leaves only project closeout costs remaining. So then we have our enterprise funds. Our water fund had operating revenues of about five point six million. This was a three point two percent decrease from the prior year, and that was just due to a decrease in system development fees, which come from new construction. And then total expenses were about four point one million. This was a three point six percent increase for over two thousand and twenty-two. And that's for the same reasons I talked about in the general fund, COLA, health insurance premiums, and overall inflation. And then lastly, we have our wastewater fund. Operation and maintenance of the wastewater plant is contracted, so revenues and expenses here are pretty stable. Total revenues here were about two hundred and seven thousand, and expenses were about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. So that's all I have. Again, I would encourage you to look at the popular annual financial report. It goes into a little more detail and just highlights more than just the finances. Of course, I'm always happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Very nice presentation. Back on the expenditures for debt service, also, that was a big increase year over year. How much, I assume the fire station and those initial payments there probably had a lot to do with it.
No, that increase was the FEMA special obligation bond. So that one three point six million dollar payment that was made, when you take that out, it actually was a decrease year over year. So that's where that is. The fire station is not part of that yet.
If for the water revenue being slightly down, that's interesting because does that just mean how much money we collected or how much water was used by the town overall?
So that was the total revenues that came in. If you look at just the water that was used, that increased. The system development fees, those are when there's a new construction and setting up, you know, a new house and having the water set up there. There was a lot less of that, which we saw in like, you know, land transfer slowed down as well. So that's what the decrease was. Yeah, when you look, when you take that out of it, just the general revenues from water usage actually did increase.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments?
No, it's a great, yeah, it's a great usable form.
Now, ongoing business. Anything tonight, town man?
No, sir.
New business. Alright, item number one, reducing the town's carbon footprint.
Yes, sir. These are some items Michael has highlighted in his memorandum, that just some of the items that the town has been... That um, just some of the items that the that the town has been striving to decrease single use consumption. We noticed is at your place this evening, the new water goblet, um. And the water, you notice out in the hallway is a container. Um, I guess it's called a container water cooler. For, you know, all of our citizens and any employees that are out and about can fill up their reusable water glass. That's just one of the things and I won't go through each of them. Um, but one of the items that we are requesting board action on this evening. Has to do with um, paper site plans that are submitted. And in our um zoning ordinance, it is a requirement that fifteen paper copies be submitted. Which is um, about ten more than we actually need. So we would like for a motion that would reduce that amount to um, from fifteen to five. Um, and allow one or two extra trees to get to remain um, from the um. Site plans. Plus it is, it is a savings to our um citizens. They are very expensive to reprint. And if there is any change, that's a lot of um, a lot of pages and you've seen some of the big ones, how how big they can be. So would request a motion um, for that. Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second the motion. I um, just want to ask, so that we'd still be provided with that, the guest commissioners?
Electronic, yes, sir. You have an electronic, um, and if you would like to see a hard copy, we would have one up in that.
So we wouldn't get that in our packet anymore?
No, sir.
We also have them in the planning department.
I know, but my, my thing is I do like seeing them personally. I, I, I mean, I'm not an engineer, so I'm not scrutinizing them to the, to the level that, you know, anybody, to a knowledgeable level, I guess you'd say, but. Um, we voted on this once before, or we talked about this once before, not having it and we, 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 we went against that because.
What you, what you, what we talked about before was the site plan is not coming to you. That's not what this is. This is not getting the big thick.
We're just gonna get in electronic form?
Yes.
Emailed or something, I assume. Just emailed to us. Okay. So, all right.
What we discussed before was that the site plans that were, that were no variances or?
Both, that we weren't gonna get it. I remember we voted on along.
I remember, well, actually you didn't vote, um. It was, it was just tabled and never voted on, but there was, um, you and Commissioner Gray in particular were opposed to it, um. What that was, was what we had explained to the board, was when a site plan meets the ordinance. There's nothing you can do but approve it. There's, there's no, you know, there's, there's nothing that you can add to it or take away from and or not approve it legally. Um, and um, like some of the other areas do, we were just recommending that. It not come to the board commissioners. We certainly would make you aware of it. You would know what was being constructed um, in town. And could certainly review anything that the planning staff had. Um, that's what that was and we understood. At that time, that was not something that you wanted to consider. This is simply paper reduction here. It was, you will still have the site plan come before you. Even though if it meets the ordinance, technically there's not any action other than approving it, that the board should do.
So the fifteen that are printed, you're gonna reduce it to five and those five would just be kept for?
Well, the five would allow for them to go to the departments that need to actually have a.
A hard copy.
A hard copy to review, that, that do get into the technical aspects of it to make sure that it does meet the ordinance.
I assume the same expectation applies to the planning board. They may have been getting paper plans as well and they would switch to digital.
Well, uh, it's interesting. I, I, I like, I don't, I, I, I would. I don't want it to be like where we have to come search for it or, uh, even if it's an email. I, 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 I would think that at the very least, it should be something like in our packet so we can kind of, um. You know, have knowledge, notice and knowledge of it, you know what I'm saying? So if we're eliminating that. I, I know what you're saying, but I, I mean, to me, I like s- like seeing it like on paper.
So you wouldn't be okay with just a regular size of it? You know, cause like Michael was saying, they, they could reduce the size, but this is. What I think where like the expense and the is the.
Large.
The large. Right, which, which, which actually doesn't come from them. It comes from the customer, right? And, and that's where, so it's right, they have to produce it, which is expensive and it's a lot of.
They send it to us in electronic form and we can reduce it and print eleven by seventeens. If you really want a paper copy, but it's gonna be difficult to read.
But it, but at least gives you an idea of seeing it. But if you have never looked at one online, like on, the, it is pretty easy to like. Manipulate and move around and just, just food for thought.
We have some of our, some of our technical reviewers.
Exactly.
Do it solely online. They do not get a paper copy now. That's why we.
I just see what I, I mean, I see what I re- you know.
And it's hundreds and hundreds of dollars that they spend and they have to do it three times at fifteen copies each. And it's, it's probably in the, in the thousands by the time they're done with the site plan um, review. Just to get copies. Not to mention the paper.
I mean, I'm into saving them money, but uh, and, and the carbon footprint, but I'm just, you know, if it's, if it, if it's eleven by. This is a pa- piece of paper, right? And it's hard, it's hard to read, then I maybe, maybe it's useless uh, in that small paper form. So. I would think, you know, at least that, yes, I would want that, at least that, like the small paper form in our, in our packet.
And then you can use the combination between the electronic and the small paper form and go.
Yeah, I think that's fair, cause I, you know, part of it is notice, you know, and knowledge, you know, I. This is where I get notice and knowledge of anything being built in the town and I don't have to dig for it. So. You know, for me, and I know Terry, I think, uh, speak for him, but I remember him saying the same thing, you know. We don't want to be last to know sometimes about, you know, anything that's going on sometimes, being built or whatnot. And that, and that, and that. It, the, believe it or not, that, you know, that document is usually the first, I don't know about you guys, was the first notice I ever get. Not that it's required, but it's the first notice I get of anything being developed in, in the town. You know what I'm saying? So. So for us, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's putting us at least on notice of what's going on, you know, what's being, what's being, um.
That part isn't, that part isn't changing.
Yeah.
It's still on the agenda, it would still be an agenda.
Okay.
With memos from the planning department.
Okay.
And memos from the manager to the board recommending approval or recommending denial if it doesn't meet the ordinance.
Yeah, I know, and, and it's, you're saying it's more or less a formality, but, and I ge- I get that too. I just, I, I would rather have something on paper.
Sure.
Even if it's not the big thing, you know, just not electronic entirely.
Using that with the electronic version.
Yes, together. I think that'll, that'll, that would work. So I'd be amenable to that.
Okay, good, thank you.
Uh, so we have, we have a motion. Is it, is your second?
Yeah, if that's the motion, that put to, to do that, uh, to the, the point where we'll have that as well. Yes, I'll second that motion.
Comments? I, I have one observation is, would we like to get, we have two empty seats here. Would we like to maybe let Terry and whoever gets appointed have their opinion stated about this as well? Or we ready to make a decision tonight? I know Terry had pretty strong feelings last time, if I remember, and uh.
But again, this is a little bit different, just, but this is different. The, you're, they're still, they're still, we would still be getting the.
Review process. Review process is not changing at all.
I know, but we never were. That was never on the table, reviewing, removing the review process.
Well, it was.
Oh, it was?
That was what, that was what we brought to you before.
Years ago.
I thought it was just the paper, oh, the.
No, it was the review because if we were stating to you, if it meets the ordinance. There's really no reason for the board of commissioners to review it unless you determine that that's what you want to do and that's how it was left. This is simply a matter of reducing the paper.
Okay, well. We have. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Please, just any further comment? All right, uh, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed? It's unanimous. Less paper. Okay, um, moving on. To uh, committee reports. Anything to share this evening?
Nothing.
No, no, not.
Neither, neither, neither do I. Commissioner's agenda.
I have no agenda.
Uh, mayor's agenda, uh, two things. Um, I want to thank staff again for last, getting that. Uh, resolution opposition to the home insurance rates done so quickly. Like we really kind of asked a lot of staff to get that done. Really short time rush period and uh. You know, that, it really turned out great. I actually had a meeting with other mayors last week and they. Really were impressed by what we did and, and copied us to a degree. So it's always nice to be the M B M up here. So thank you very much. Um, I, last week, January eighteenth, I attended the first Derek County Housing Task Force meeting. This was really a, a kind of get to know you first uh, meeting moving along. We didn't really. Lot of mu- a lot was discussed, but not a lot really, you know, we didn't move a lot forward with things. We had a. Time for everyone to do introduction. We had a really good presentation on all the history of, has been taken on the dressing housing over the last thirty years. And there's a lot, has been attempted and a lot of work has gone into it and it was nice to learn that. And then. Entire group got chance to kind of speak their mind and share their concerns and so this housing task force is definitely moving forward and, you know. I welcome board and staff's input and look forward to sharing this with you all. Thank you, Ryan. He was a big help. He took good notes and I'm most glad to have him there. So that's it for mayor's agenda, um, town manager's agenda?
No, sir, not this evening. Thank you. And nothing from the town attorney either.
All right, then we can move on to the consent agenda.
Yes, sir. Um, first item is the minutes from the January twelfth, twenty twenty four. Um, second is the adoption of the town supplement number nineteen. Uh, approval of consent agenda will accord the approval of disordinance. And then lastly is recommendation for audit services with this for year twenty three, twenty four. Um, we're recommending pottering company in Morrisville, North Carolina, who's been providing our services since twenty twenty. Um, they've been a beneficial partner to the town. The finance department's attached memorandum highlights this. The second year of the ongoing three year contract extension for continuing services through June thirty, twenty twenty five. And a contract for the fiscal year twenty three, twenty four audit for forty two thousand five hundred dollars. Plus eighteen hundred per major program audit cost if required. Um, along with the finance department's recommendation to consider, continue, excuse me, this partnership and approval of this. Consent agenda will authorize the manager to execute the contractual agreement, the audit services twenty three, twenty four. And staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as. As presented.
Okay, um.
Yes, I moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Discussion?
No.
Uh, hearing not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 It's unanimous. Okay, um, we have moved on to our second opportunity for public comments. Same rules always apply, uh, three minutes for an individual and five for, and a group and floor is open to anyone who'd like to speak.
Same name, Dennis Poel, Greg Chores. A very impressive presentation. That was great. Uh, I guess that means that we're in the black. Is that, is that what that means in one word or less? We're in the black? So we're not broke? The town, I mean? You know, during that conversation, I heard water tossed about a few times and uh, a few sessions ago. I brought up something that I think would save the town a lot of money. And if it saves the town money, it saves residents, homeowners money. Uh, and that is push on showers. I mentioned that before, um. If you've gone to the beach, and I know you all have, if you haven't seen a shower head that's missing, if you haven't seen a shower that's still running. You haven't been to the beach much. So. I would like to uh, go ahead and reemphasize the thought that I had on push on, I'm gonna call it rinses, not showers. Because that's basically what it's supposed to be for. And. I was looking at some of the beach accesses that have showers, not fourth or fifth, because they don't have them. But a fourth, uh, it's some of the other, and it looks to me like there's a meter there. With that meter, it tells you how much water is used. My thought is that if we, if you get a valve with a push on, when you take it off, it stops, or you get a whole unit. You could place it in addition to fourth and fifth. You could place it at one of these beach accesses. It already has a shower with a meter. And you can compare this year's use versus last year's use. And I, I think you're gonna find that those type of either units or levers that push on. Will be saving a lot of water. Water equals money. And plus, in the summertime. Uh, I hear it all the time, conserve water, save water. Well, that's, it's, it's pretty catchy, nice to say. But I think that this is a, a possibility where we can put those words into action by using push on showers. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak in this public comment period? All right, not seeing anybody. Response to public comment. So a push button shower, is it similar to what you see in the hand warmers in restrooms? Where you push your button and you got thirty seconds or, or not? No?
You push it and it's on while you're pushing it.
It stays on, you're.
Sometimes some of them are levers. Yeah, some of them are levers. You have to actually pull the lever. I think that's.
It's a timer.
P I O has the ones that you hit the button and you have to stand there and hold the button.
Yes. They are, K Patteras also has.
And they have ones that release, slow release, that you hit it once and it slowly releases, then shuts off. I've seen that.
I think, I, they're expensive.
I have looked at them. They do have different options on them. If you want to see one, uh, entire unit, they have them at Cookwood Beach.
I don't think it's a bad idea. I would talk about uh, reducing paper costs. We can reduce uh, cost of water.
Yeah, I like it too. I need to go down there on a warmer day and see what it's all about. Any other further response to public comment? All right, moving forward, uh, look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, mayor?
Second.
All right, comment? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, for adjourn. Thank you, everybody.